I'd like to call the November 20th meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order, and I'd like to ask you all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being taped to air on DCTV in the Dartmouth YouTube channel. And I'd like to also ask everyone to remember to turn their cell phones on to silence, please. And at this point, we can start with a roll call, please.
Dr. Jenkins?
Here.
John Noons?
Yep.
Kathleen Amorall?
Here.
Dr. Karafotis? Christopher Oliver?
Here.
Okay. So I will just note that Dr. Karafotis had a family obligation. She could not make it. And our student representative, Madison Creer, could not make it. She had a death in the family. And so we're thinking of her and hope that she can make it to our next meeting. At this point in time, I'd like to call anyone up for if anyone would like to comment on any item that is on our agenda this evening. If you'd like to make a statement, please feel free to come up to the podium, state your name, and let us know what you're thinking. All right. So having no public comment, I will next move on to approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the regular session minutes of October 30th, 2017.
So moved.
My second. All right. So I have a motion by Mr. Noons and a second by Ms. Amorall. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that motion passes unanimously. So now I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Noons, who's going to take the lead, since he has been such a dedicated volunteer in support of our band in recognizing our national champion Dartmouth High School Marching Band and Color Guard. Mr. Noons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. At this time, what I would like to have come up to the podium, Mr. William Kingsland, who was our Director of Music, Ms. Valerie Payton, who was our Head Drum Major, and her two able-bodied assistants, Luke Higgins and Mitchell Moran. And we've asked them, and I had asked, and thank you to the Superintendent and Dr. Jenkins for putting this on the agenda tonight. The high school band this year went back down, as we do every year, to East Rutherford, New Jersey, to MetLife Stadium, to participate in the U.S. Band Open Class National Champions. And came away with the high score that evening and are back-to-back champions in Division V. So what I'd like to do is just, you know, turn it over to Mr. Kingsland and the drum majors for now.
All right. So just quickly, you know, at the beginning of the season, it seemed maybe like we were a little bit behind some of the people that we compete with or compete against or whatever. And that's kind of like because the skill set that we ask the kids to do, there's a lot of technical stuff that goes into what we do with the show. And for all that some programs were complete the first week, ours was not, and it continued to grow right to like the last two weeks. And that was the word we got back from the panels of judges. We would see that, you know, the technical difficulty, what was going on, and how much was going on visually and musically, kind of distinguished us this year. And this was kind of cool. Being able to go on last in our class was a first for U.S. Bands and put us in a good place. And then it was a good, good show after that. So I'm going to let my drum major friends here have a couple of comments, so.
Hello. I am Valerie Payton. I'm the Head Drum Major of the marching band. I want to start off by saying that I'm extremely proud of what my band has accomplished. I remember Nationals night, I went up to everyone and I said that the win was right in front of us and that we just needed to grab it and own it. And that's exactly what we did. And it's just so cool to stand up on a podium and just be able to lead this amazing group of people. They're all my family, and I'm so proud of them. This is my fourth year. I have one season left. I really just want to stay forever. But it was just really amazing to, you know, be with my friends and just be in such a program that encourages good teamwork and discipline ship and just overall like musicality. It's really great to be part of something like that.
Hi, I'm Mitchell Moran. I just want to thank BK for giving me this wonderful opportunity. This year was really great. A lot of, a lot of people were very supportive of me. And I'm only a freshman, which is rarely fresh from drum majors. And I really didn't think I was going to do all that well, because I had a lot of people saying I couldn't do a lot. But as the season kept going further and further, I think I did pretty well. And it was a great season. Everyone in the band was very supportive of me. And just want to say thank you again to BK.
Hi, I'm Luke Higgins. So this was my first season, and I was very excited to join the band. And when I first started, I was really nervous, because I didn't really know much. But now, as an amazing teacher, and lots of the instructors that we had at the band, like Mr. Kingsland, helped me get going. And it was a great season. I couldn't have had a better time. And I feel very lucky to be part of a program like we have at the high school.
So, kind of as you can hear, a lot of what we do, it's a people business. I got lots of help. I got good help at the high school, Mr. Hanks, Mike Rayner, Tyler Kingsland, John Souza, all the people that work with us. People like Mr. Noons that come out, people like all of you that have come out and done stuff for us, too. So when one of these goes our way, it's a win for the community. I hope everybody feels that way. It's not just really all about the band. I'm going to tell you, when you go out of this region, people talk about the Dartmouth band, you know. I think they do it to you guys sometimes. You'll go to a conference, like, oh, Dartmouth, yeah, whatever, you know. But really, it's a people business. It would be a lot different if it was just me. And, you know, thanks to everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just to start, Mr. Oliver, and say a few things?
First of all, congratulations to the marching band, to the three of you, to Mr. Kingsland, to all your assistants, staff, volunteers. You know, what more can I say? It's just, it's great to be on the Dartmouth School Committee, to hear about all these wonderful, positive things. It's great to hear about what the band represents and just the quality and caliber of the Dartmouth High School Marching Band. And it's a real testament to Mr. Kingsland and to the students here at Dartmouth High School. You folks should be very, very proud of yourselves. And I know you are. And I think that probably goes without saying. But once again, just congratulations. And one of these years, I really, I keep saying it, said it last year, I want to get down to New Jersey. I got to get down to New Jersey, because I want to see, I want to see it from that perspective. So congratulations again, everyone.
Yes, congratulations. You mentioned, you know, that you're part of this team. And really, watching you, the marching band, visually, not only what you're hearing auditory, but the visual, it's just so, it looks so effortless and smooth and beautiful. And so thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to this. Congratulations.
Okay. So I just want to echo my colleagues in saying congratulations. I think it's a real testament to how hard you all work. All the volunteers who support this, all the people in the music program, but particularly the marching band and the color guard. I live across the bay, and I can hear you. I can hear how hard you work all the time. We come in, and it's dark, and I think, is the band still playing? And you are. You guys work real hard. And I think that's a really important lesson and role model to all the kids in the district, that hard work pays off. And so thank you for being role models to all the kids in the school district, and congratulations.
I got one more, too, before you finish up. And I think, thank you. I'm sure you do, but make sure you thank your parents for supporting you and being part of the process, because I know some of them here this evening. So thank you to the parents as well for supporting your students in the band.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Mr. Kingsland talked a little bit about, you know, going places and people watching us. And, you know, down in New Jersey was interesting because, you know, we're in the parking lot at MetLife Stadium, and the drum line is in their area and the color guard. And I was over with the band. And we had people, you know, from other schools that had already competed, or, you know, maybe they were Division VI bands, and they weren't going on until later. But, you know, they're just, their eyes are glued to us, watching what we're doing and everything else. I realize the students are, you know, busy, you know, warming up and doing, you know, things of that nature. But that's the type of draw that, you know, these young men and women have. A couple of little statistics just for everybody. They're the Division V U.S. Band New England champs. They're the state champs and New England champs. They're the U.S. Band New England Regional Division V champs. Of course, the U.S. Band Open Class National champs. And they're also the Division V New England, Nesba New England Scholastic Marching Band Championships. I mean, they got, you know, at the Nesba finals, which was the week before, and it included getting home at, you know, 2:30 in the morning from the regionals, type of deal. They went out to Nesba on the Sunday afternoon up in Lawrence and got a 99-1, okay, out of 100, type of deal. I mean, we've beat Division VI bands all year. We've had top scores all year. They're, they're a great group of students to be around. I could have billed this this weekend, because I needed to get some information just so that, just so that I had it. And I may be off a little bit. I hope I'm not, but I think I am. But I've counted in Mr. Kingsland's tenure, since he took over for Mr. Madrigal in September of 2001, 12 Nesba championships. And I count seven U.S. Band number-one places. I may be off one or two, okay? And, but the others have been second and third places. So it's quite a feat to have. And I, for one, am very proud of them.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. We're so proud.
Thank you, guys.
And I will also say, I know that it's a school night, so you may feel free to leave if you need to go home and do homework. I know you're all very good students, so you don't need to feel, to feel that you have to stay for the entire meeting. Thank you so much.
Just on the way out, thanks to our high school administration, keep us, keep us rolling. And Mr. Martin, that cleans the parking lot out for me. It's a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our student representative couldn't be here this evening, as we mentioned. So next, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Mr. Galishaw, our Chief Technology Officer, who's going to unveil the district's new website. So really exciting stuff. Mr. Galishaw?
All right. Let me just begin by saying, that's not fair. I can't follow that. I haven't won any awards with this website yet. That was amazing. And it's true, we are recognized as the band in a conference far away. Someone said, don't, doesn't your band have an 18-wheeler? And I just said it all. So yes. Welcome, everyone. This is the technology presentation. I promised to be quick and riveting. I think the star of this presentation is the website. So I'd just like to start off by talking about the new website and app. The beginning, in the beginning, the creation of a website starts as an idea, wanting to change our current website to a new website. It was formed through committee, the Strategic Planning Committee, the Engagement Subcommittee, Community Engagement Subcommittee. And we have members here and principals and community members. And we discussed our needs, and we perused a lot of websites, looking at the design we might look for, and also some of the needs that we're looking for, such as it being very organized, having social media aspect, dynamic, and to be up to date. And there were features that we needed that were important to the committee on behalf of the school department. Again, those social media feeds, the ability to push notifications to parents who receive information, as opposed to going to hunt for information, they'll receive information. A calendar that's dynamic, so you can choose the, any and all the schools you want to look at for events. Easy to post information for our internal people, and needs to be current and relevant. Of course, you know, our old website is a wonderful website, a lot of information. It's been a storehouse for information. We found that the information had gotten excessive and a little bit disorganized. So that was one of the criteria for our new website, which was to keep things organized within what they call channels, so you can, the information is properly grouped. The new website is, looks like this here. These are just snapshots. We're going to go live in a demo in a moment. And you can see that it has pictures that we'll rotate, also social media feeds on the sides, and below the fold have announcements, and some hot buttons at the top, both for channels, where we can find information for staff, parents, and community, as well as hot-button topics like school menus, bus routes, and such. The new website is located at a URL or a website address called dartmouth-school. We were actually, at the moment they opened up the extension .school, we happened to be there. So we scooped up with the ones we could. Dartmouth-school, DPS-school, got a bunch of other ones, too, we might play with later. But it's an extension, just like .com or .org, and it's a little easier to remember. So we grabbed dartmouth-school. We thought it'd be a nice, catchy one to give out to people. And let's do a quick demo. All right. This is for the posterity for the recording. I'm going to go over to the website and click through a few sites. The following, your following will be self-explanatory. You will not be able to hear me, but you can see. As you can see here, we have district information, staff information. People will be marking tire lists to get into to look at this information. For the staff buttons here, we've got some hot buttons that define the Gmail and their Ask me and such, as well as all the shortcuts you'll need for all information for parents, extensive directories of things you might need, as well for students. On our home site here, we have information such as our mission, school hours, et cetera, as well as our superintendent and her Twitter feed. And we have information with calendars. Seeing a demonstration of this is difficult, so I encourage everyone to go online to dartmouth-school and have at it. The old website will be active until December 31st, 11:59 PM, midnight. And I'm sure I'll be watching it at midnight go offline, but I'm sure you will not be. So that's something that will, you want to, you want to, anyone that goes there will see the old website active until that time. We're slowly dismantling the old website, taking the relevant information off there and putting it onto the new website. And just before this meeting, I posted onto our current website that we've moved. And it's a nice location that we've moved, so. The other piece of this is a partner with the website, and that is an app that just came online today. If you go to the App Store, whether it be at Chrome or iTunes, and search Dartmouth Public Schools, you will see an app with our beautiful logo. And basically, it has buttons within it for quick feeds and also notifications. So you can choose the calendar you'd like to look at. I think a lot of people will migrate to this app. It's a great way to have the entire website in your hand and get push notifications from the school department if there are any emergencies or important notifications. It works. I'd like to show a demo of that as well.
It's cool. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
There should be something that says Dartmouth or it helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. This. This is a connection to my app. Tweet here from Barack Obama. What do you mean, meaning? There we go. If you go to the app store, you'll see, I can see right now. But down towards the bottom here, you'll see the Dartmouth Public School app. Through the App Store, here, one notification. This takes the latest feeds from our Twitter feeds all over the school, school department. As you can see here, you see calendars, and the app that makes it easy to get things like stupid Aesop, you're pulling in substitutes or today, your Gmail, bus routes, and so on. Your superintendent, oh, there we go. We have athletics and scores and such, as you can see. So it's an app that we will put, do push notifications, have news, Twitter feeds, and so on. The feed at the top there is from the latest feeds that the district is posting through all of its Twitter feeds and social media feeds. As you can see from the app, it was important that we had the most relevant and most cutting-edge information in the palm of your hands. So as of tonight, and after the broadcast of this, this, this school committee meeting, we'll see the app pick up speed, and people will be able to log in and take control. With that, I'd like to open it for questions.
Questions, comments? Mr. Noons, you want to start down here? You started down there last time?
Sure. That's fine. Very nice. Hopefully, I'll be able to figure it out. You know, I mean, everybody knows my technology skills.
It looks pretty user-friendly, Mr. Noons.
It does that. But seriously, you know, will there be a link from the old site to the new site? So in other words, if I go to, seriously, I've got, you know, in my favorites, I've got Dartmouth Public Schools. And, you know, January 1st, I click on that. Is it going to redirect me?
What it will do is, well, the old, the old website is holding a link to the new website there. Once a person goes there, they bookmark the new website. I'll see if I can hold on to the old URL to be redirected to Dartmouth Schools. But it's important that people eventually bookmark Dartmouth-school.
Right. But that's what, you know.
What it is, is the, the server that holds the website will go offline, but the actual address can sometimes be preserved to reroute to a different site. So we want the people to know that are being rerouted, that eventually it will shut off. So it's good to bookmark it eventually. But it's much easier to remember, too, as opposed to dartmouthps-schoolfusion.ma.k12.1234.
Yeah, exactly. And any information that is in the old, the old website right now, emails, you know, that are, are those all getting flipped? Are all that information going to get flipped?
Transferred over. And we also downloaded a program that actually pulled down the entire old website that will preserve on our servers for posterity and reference if necessary. It pulled out all the links, all the old documents, all the old pictures. So in case someone says, there was a form on there. And that's what I'm hoping the month and a half now will do, when people say, call on a website for information, saying, there was a form I used to use on the old website. I can't find it on the new website. And we can direct them there.
Thank you.
Samerel?
It's so exciting. You know, in looking through the app, it's just really user-friendly, and it's comprehensive. Not that I thought it wouldn't be, but in downloading it, you see, you can find everything here, really user-friendly. If I were to ask a question just for everyone's knowledge, so if, if a parent group, so like a PTO had an event, how would they go about to putting that on the calendar?
I've been contacted by the PTO of the high school, and subsequently, probably with the other PTOs, too. So I will make arrangements with them, so they have a place there of how they can, they can post information.
Okay.
Probably through our staff that might have the login connections to place stuff. But I know it's usually timely and it's usually important. So I know I've been contacted.
But it's great. Yeah, just picking out your calendars. You can really see what's going on.
The people that are really the stars of this, everyone's been posting great things. The administration and the schools have done a great job posting. They're really the rock stars of this. Two people within my office, Tracy Boujat, which is, was the Secretary for the Tech Department, and Hallie LaRocke. I call her Hallie LaRocke Star, because she's been, because she's been amazing trying to get this, this website. She's our data person. But she has a knack for the web stuff, too. So she's really taken to it, and she's helped people out. And she'll continue to run training classes. And we'll probably run some for parents, too, to show the app and to set it up and how to make it work the best for you. Because if you have a student that's at the Cushman School, the middle school and the high school, you can choose a calendar that can view one calendar for the three schools, so you can be kept up on events.
I mean, it's just, it's phenomenal, though. It is. It's, sometimes I've had apps for products, and you never really open it, because it's harder to maneuver. This really seems like it pushes that information to you, like a Twitter or another social media feed does. You can, you get it right there, and it's meaningful to press that app rather than, yeah. So good, great job to everyone.
And you were there at the beginning when we...
Yes. So I was a part of the strategic plan on that community engagement.
Paper and imagination.
And we viewed a lot of options. So it's wonderful. Very exciting.
The app, and there'll always be updates and improvements to all these websites, and because it's an ongoing thing. Let me just bring something back. Oh, it went away. If you want to play with it, at the top, I love doing, if you go up to the very top of the website, you can choose the word translate and translate the website to any language you want. And it will translate all the, you don't believe me? Okay, I'm doing it out.
Yeah. We believe you.
We believe you.
I think he just wants to show.
Wants to show. It's very cool.
It's going to be a constant challenge to update, keep it current, as well as it's important to make it ADA compliant, which is Americans with Disabilities Act compliant with all the documents, as well as features like what I'm going to show you, a translation. Arabic.
Magical. Pretty cool, huh? How is the way, isn't it? That's pretty cool.
Okay. So here we are. So here we have our parent information. And if you go over here, you can choose a language. And you have translate that. You can translate the entire website to that language.
Oh, wow.
Very cool.
Yeah.
And you see it's every language. So it's, it's an important thing to make it universal so that people around the world can see our beautiful marching band. We should have it right out front there. I should put it, I'll put it tonight.
They're going to get that picture up.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Great. Mr. Oliver, any comments, questions?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for upgrading our website. It's something It's a, Dartmouth High requests permission to participate in the DECA competition in 2018, uh, January 10th through 11th in Falmouth. The, that's District Eight. The state DECA competition, March 8th to 10th in Boston. And the international competition in Atlanta, April 20th to 25th. Um, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. Any discussion?
Good luck. I've had the fortune, the good fortune several, not recently, but in previous years to be a judge down in Falmouth. And it's always exciting to see the students as they, you know, try to work their way through problems and, you know, have to think on their feet and it's, uh, it's an exciting, exciting thing. And we've always done well with our students, so hopefully they can, uh, they can continue their good fortune.
I agree.
Yeah, I know we had some success last year. We were sending, sending some students to the international competition, so I wish our students good luck.
It's a fabulous program.
And hopefully, yeah, they, they, they make it again this year. Um, any further discussion or questions?
No.
I'm hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the motion carries unanimously. All right, so the next item on our agenda, we're moving on to new business, uh, the school committee meeting schedule for the remainder of the 2017-2018 school year. Um, we have some proposed meeting dates. I think we have one.
Just a little sheet.
Yeah, we have one already scheduled for December, right?
Right.
December 11th.
11th.
All right, and then the proposed dates for, uh, the beginning of next year are Monday, January 8th, um, Monday, February 12th, Monday, March 5th, and Monday, March 19th. I'm going to give everyone just a second to look at their calendars, see what, if there are any dates that work or don't work for people. Those all work for me.
All work for me at the moment.
Work for me.
Okay. Work for me. Okay, so, um, why don't we go ahead and schedule those for now? I will check with, uh, Dr. Karafotis, um, just to make sure that they work for her. Um, but why don't we go ahead and plan on those for, um, uh, for, through the end of March?
Yep.
Okay.
We held off on April right now because with the, you'll see the budget timeline coming up and we want to be sure at that time we coincide with the FINCOM and the Select Board, those joint meetings.
And we may have a new school committee member.
Right.
Who knows? So, right, we have someone else up here who, uh, who will have to check their calendar. So, um, so the next is the budget timeline, then. Uh, Mr. Kylie, do you want to take that, please?
Yes, Dr. Jenkins, thank you. So I provided you with a budget timeline somewhat consistent with what we've done the last couple of years. It provides us with a school committee subcommittee meeting, um, on February 5th and then bringing it to the school committee on February 12th. So in, in anticipation of Mr. Nunes's annual, um, question or comment about, about the state budget process, which is a valid one, which is, it's early on in the, in the process for the state. So, um, we'll have House One, the governor's budget, at the end of January, um, but that's all we'll have. So we won't really know where it's going until much, you know, the state budget until quite a bit later. But fortunately, the last few years, the governor's budget has, um, we've only improved from, from that point forward. So that's been nice. We wouldn't really have a house ways and means until sometime in almost mid-April. So, probably, so, um, we've got a lot of work to do in between then. But this would provide us to, the ability to meet with, um, you know, meet and, and discuss the budget at length with the school committee and then with that, with any other town boards that we need to, moving forward.
Questions?
He answered, pardon.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I think, you know, this is just my suggestion that maybe at the December school committee meeting that we would, uh, maybe could put on the agenda an opportunity for committee members to share any of our thoughts into building the budget ahead of time, because obviously, we get the, we oversee the budget, we're responsible for approving the budget, and there's a budget subcommittee meeting on the 5th. But I'd love to hear, you know, I believe it's still Carol and I that are on the budget subcommittee.
Yes.
I'd love to hear from individual committee members and, you know, in a public session, if there's any, anything that's, uh, burning in, in your eyes that you'd like to see built into, um, this year's budget. And I think it's important that for the administration to hear that as well, if there's anything from our standpoint that we think is important for the community and for, for our students, um, that, that would be a good time. So maybe just have a brief conversation at our December school committee meeting, um, just to discuss, uh, school committee priorities, maybe.
Yeah.
Would that be okay, Mr. Kylie, as well?
It's fine, sure, of course.
Any other comments or questions?
Good suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, this looks fine.
Yeah, the dates are fine.
Yeah, uh, obviously, it'd be nicer if we had more information from the state, but we get what we get when we get it. So, um, we'll just have to work with that. Um, it's one of the disadvantages of town meeting, right? When you're a mayor, council or council manager, you can go sort of right up until the end and make those changes.
Yeah.
So we just have to deal with it, which is, which is fine. It is what it is.
I mean, unfortunately, I think it's the town, no disrespect to our town fathers and they're trying to put things together, too, and I got it. But it is the, uh, the fact that, you know, they've pushed up the timeline over the past few years, too, so it is what it is.
All right, so the next, uh, item on our agenda is the superintendent's evaluation process and timeline. Uh, Dr. Gifford, you gave us a draft, so would you like to go over that with us?
Right, so as you noticed, the first thing I was, I have included is the X-Mark goals and the approval of that. So I was hoping to be able to do that at our next meeting, uh, which would probably entail, um, last year I met with, and I don't know if it was Dr. Karafotis or, for a, like a little subcommittee, just go over the goals. I'm trying to remember who was.
I think it was maybe Mr. Oliver and I, because he was chair and I was vice chair.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I think it was the two of us.
Yeah. So we'd probably want to meet ahead of time just to review.
Maybe, probably with Mr. Nunes and myself, yeah.
So we, I can send it out so that we could be ready to bring them for approval at the next meeting.
Correct.
And then, of course, just going through the rest of the timeline, very similar to last year, uh, leaving May, of course, not quite knowing when.
Right.
The chair will want to have the summit of eval and who's going to be on the committee, et cetera. And then we'll fill in the rest of the dates, but pretty much the same timeline.
Mr. Nunes, you're going to figure that one out.
Hmm.
So it was just really, it was just really, here we go again, right? Your favorite thing.
I said, that'll be, that'll be Mr. Nunes's job come May. Not that I'm excited or anything. Uh, this timeline looks fine to me. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about it?
I think it's fine.
That's fine, that's good.
Okay.
So it'll just be a matter of sending a date for the, the three of us can, can meet.
Yes.
Okay.
For the 11th.
Beautiful.
Okay, excellent. All right, so next on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
Okay, we have a few things to report on tonight. The first thing I want to mention, I believe it was in your packet, I just wanted to recognize our middle school librarian, Laura Godner, who was chosen to serve as advocacy committee co-chair for the 2017-18 Executive Board of the, um, MSLA, the Massachusetts School Library Association. And as we keep saying, we have wonderful librarians, they're amazing.
Yes, we do.
And how they integrate technology, they work with the teachers, the projects that they do, it's just phenomenal. So I wanted to recognize her for that. Also, um, just some of the things that we've been doing the last week or so, we've, uh, since we've had the MCAS release of the information, we've had individual meetings with our principals, um, just kind of digging into the data, uh, talking about some of the areas that we see we need to work on, what are we going to do about it, et cetera. And some of the things, as Ms. Roy mentioned at the last presentation, was talking about the writing that we really need to improve upon across the district and, um, ensuring that all of our teachers are using the workshop model that we've worked so hard in the last three years to prepare them for and, and making sure all schools are moving towards that.
Can I interrupt real quick then? Sure, you just reminded me of a question and having, having a discussion with someone about this. Part of it is, you know, I wonder, um, the extent to which a lot of districts are moving to one-to-one, right? And so students have access to computers all the time. And we talked about how having some confusion about how the screen worked and learning to type. And I, I don't wonder, I know we had talked already about sort of agenda items, but maybe some more, like where we are with respect to technology, because I do think that's probably true, that some of the districts have more, because they have more resources than us and are sort of better able to integrate that, and that helps, right? It's, it's a very different thing to be writing with a pen and paper than it is to be writing and editing on a computer.
Right.
And so I think, I mean, obviously, we don't want to teach the test, but I think it is worth us sort of discussing whether or not that puts us on the eight, behind the eight ball and where we need to plan for that.
I think that definitely plays into, into it. My question to maybe Ms. Roy or Dr. Gifford is, is there, did the state release any data as far as the score, the assessment results that you presented at the last meeting, um, with us for Dartmouth versus the state? Clearly, districts were given the option still to choose whether or not they were going online or paper-based. Was that, were those results the aggregate of both the online tests and the paper-based tests, or is that just on?
The state made a ju, an adjustment for the platform. So psychometrically.
So we don't know, they, they made an adjustment. So.
Count for the differences.
Yeah.
And that, that's, that's actually a really good point to note, is that they didn't release the data separately. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That's right.
This is how stu, uh, districts and students, uh, taking it on paper did compared to districts taking it on paper. They just, so part of me really believes, because I see it with my own daughter, who I got her MCAS results back from fifth grade, which I was just like, something's not making sense here, as well as in the district I work in, which it just seems to me that I think maybe something's a little bit off with.
Adjustment.
With their adjustments.
Could be.
So.
Could be.
But I think Dr. Jenkins does bring up a good point as far as.
And maybe we could add that to our agenda items, sort of, you know, what it might take to get us there and what that plan might look like.
Right.
All right, sorry, can I interrupt?
Okay, no, that's, that's fine. So, so we did, we've had those meetings and we'll continue to meet and talk about the different, uh, strategies that are being, um, implemented across the schools. Uh, I attended a Title IX conference this, last week and, um, just hearing about, again, some more updates and things that schools have to make sure they're doing for, you know, no discrimination. So one of the things that I came away with that I think will be important is a checklist of just various things we should have in our policies, how our forms and documents and our investigatory procedures should be. So we'll be talking more about that with that information. It's never a dull moment, nothing ever remains the same. Um, I also attended the, um, which all Ms. Townsend did as well, the Massachusetts Down Syndrome Conference, the 13th Annual Educators Forum for that, and, um, really talked about best practices in inclusive education. And the keynote was fabulous about really focusing on and that all of our students deserve the opportunity to learn how to communicate. And it was really that communication piece that they focused on. I thought it was fabulous, that piece. Of course, Quinn had their Museum of Kindness and Caring last week, which was obviously well-attended. And I was happy that I didn't have to do, I don't know, some little drum things this year, but it was beads and it was easier, so we did the beads. Um, the Unified Athletic Program that we had last week, well, once again, I was able to attend at least the beginning, the opening ceremony and, um, before I had to run off to another meeting. But, yeah, once again, it's just the most spectacular event, I think, those kinds of events when everybody gets to be special and valued and, and participate to the full, their full capacity. I loved it. Um, and I guess that's about all I have, but Jim, Mr. Kylie would like to share one thing also.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. So last Thursday, the 16th, we were pleased that Matthew Beaton, who is the State Secretary of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, as well as Judith Judson, who's the Commissioner of the Department of Energy, were able to visit Dartmouth High School and observe our boiler project. Um, that, again, that boiler project, we've talked about this in the past, was funded partially through a state grant, uh, Green Communities Grant. So they were very impressed. Secretary Beaton actually put a, a Twitter posting out, which is now linked on our new website. Um, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Nunes for representing the school committee, Sean Laws, the energy manager for the town, and Paul Murphy, the building inspector, Joe Madeiras from maintenance, and most of all, Rick Ferreira, for, uh, explaining the intricacies of, uh, the new boiler system to them when we were there. But, uh, it was a very successful visit and we mentioned, I personally mentioned at least 10 times that we, uh, we'd be grateful for any future support. We have some other projects lined up for them, so it was a good visit.
And they were very receptive.
They were, they were.
Which was nice.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Kylie, Dr. Gifford. Um, I don't have anything to report to the chair, except to remind people it is an early release on Wednesday and it's an early, early release. It's a holiday early release, so everyone ought to plan for that. Um, does anybody have any other items that they would like to share, Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, I just, uh, I know our student rep would have talked about it, but I'll jump in. Just a congratulations, and I know the football team has one more game Thanksgiving Day over in Fairhaven, our annual Thanksgiving Day game that everybody looks forward to, but, you know, congratulations to, um, all our fall sports teams, the tournaments that they were in, everyone did, uh, did very well, uh, in the participation, you know, get, you know, going on. So that was, uh, that was great to see. I managed to catch a couple of thi, a couple of games. I caught the volleyball game at New Bedford High, which was tremendous.
Yeah.
Type of deal, even though we got beat. The young ladies really did a nice job, uh, you know, up against, you know, the Division One school. Uh, and also, too, there is a volleyball tournament that the Honors Society is putting on tomorrow night at, at, uh, the high school and is, I don't know how many teams competing, but it'll be a good, 36. So that'll be, that'll be a good time and it's, it's a fundraiser that the Honors Society and one other group is doing. So if you get an opportunity to, uh, get down there and support your favorite team, it'll be good. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Oliver?
I would just like to, uh, offer my thanks to the teachers of Dartmouth, the, uh, support staff, the administration, um, everyone. Thank you for the job that you do for the, the students in this town. And I wish you and your family, uh, this goes to everyone out there as well, a happy, safe Thanksgiving.
All right. So our next meeting is on December 11th. Um, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.